Call the town of Oliver Springs for July the 17th to work. Town Council to work. Joe, roll call please.
Robert Miller, Jeff Bass.
Here.
Charlie Bailey.
Here.
Teresa Van Hook.
Here.
Terry Holland.
Here.
Becky Devaney.
Yes.
We got five out of six we got calls.
Awesome. All right, Mr. Joe, please support the prayer.
Our father, we approached our throne of grace. And first, we asked for wisdom from these council members. We asked that you would liberally grant this request to help us govern our city. We pray for next all the areas of unrest in the world, Israel and Ukraine and many other places. We pray that your hand would be upon each and every person where they would see your truth and your way and that they would seek to have your peace within their country. Third, we pray for our first responders and our policemen and firemen and all that serve us in these emergency capacities, that you would give them wisdom and give them the skills that they need to do their work, give them the peace and comfort that you always offer if we ask and ask from the heart. We pray that you would bless our town and bless our nation and give our leaders wisdom. I ask all these things in my son's name. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we have a motion to a further minutes.
I make the motion to a further minute.
Motion, Ms. Van Hook, we have a second.
I will second.
Second on Ms. Devaney. Any discussion? Any correction, further? All right, roll call, Joe.
Jeff Bass.
Bass.
Charlie Bailey.
Yes.
Teresa Van Hook.
Yes.
Terry Holland.
Yes.
Becky Devaney.
Yes.
Jeff Bass is forward, and I see Jeff Bass.
Thank you, Mr. Joe. Anybody from the crowd would like to come forward and speak right now, be your chance to come forward and address the council, just state your name and where you live. Mayor update real quick, just want to remind everybody real quick, the block party this Saturday from 5 to 7 is correct downtown, super excited about that. I hear there's going to be a Dunkin' booth and is it true that David Laxton's going to be in that Dunkin' booth?
Right by the mayor's.
Right by the mayor's. That is correct, right by the mayor, you're right. So the mayor will definitely be in the Dunkin' booth, so it's your chance to get us good and wet, but super excited about that. I don't have much tonight, just want to say, you know, I watch Congressman Tim Wartship a lot, he's one of my favorite congressmen, and every time he does a video, here's what he says, "Thank you for sending me here to serve people." And, you know, that resonates, you know, has resonated with me and I'm thankful that I get to serve and I'm thankful for the people that I get to serve with and it's an honor. So without that, without further ado, Mr. Jenkins.
Not a lot to add other than paving is ongoing. I've not heard back from J.B. Aspel about when the speed bagels will be installed. The other thing to hand out in your packet, the Leadership Roan County, this is a youth leadership program that they've started, it's open to all students in all high schools in Roan County. We actually have one of those, one of these youth here, Wyatt Humphries, get him to stand up, just kind of recognize him. I mean, this is a super program that they've got, they'd love just to get the word out on this, kind of get more people involved with it. So if you've got any questions for Wyatt here.
Which schools do you go to?
I go here to Oliver Springs High School.
I don't care what year I'm in.
I'm a junior, Rosson Jr.
And you're Wyatt Humphries?
Yep, oh, I'm Humphries.
You'll make the minutes.
Yes. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, a lot of people may not know what Leadership Roan County is, but a lot of the cities and counties have them, I was in the second Leadership Roan County class myself. What you do is there's about 20 to 25 area leaders, community leaders, they can be religious leaders, businessmen, governmental leaders and so forth, and you have a class and you meet and you have various officials from the state government, the local government, from business, from industry, that will tell you about various problems that you may have or that exist in the counties or various opportunities. And the idea is that these leaders get to know each other on a personal level and what you're doing is you're building a network where if I'm, say, the mayor of Oliver Springs and I've never met the mayor of Rockwood, you know, we just got no communication. But if I'm on Leadership Roan County and he's on Leadership Roan County after this is over, about four months, you come on first name basis and you call him up on first name and say, "Hey, you got a truck I could borrow from my fire department?" He says, "Yeah," see? And at that point, you have this network system that will give you community assignments, like for example, they may come up and say, "This half will put forth a proposal to unite all the high schools in Roan County, the Orange County schools, and this group will come up with a proposal to build local schools in each town or research to find out exactly what these local schools may need in terms of improvement." And they'll give you, you know, four or five weeks to accomplish this and you'll have your meetings and you'll go meet with the school officials, you may go meet at the school principals and get all this information and then collectively you can write a report and say they got one side, another side, and it may not be necessarily delivered to the school board, but the idea is that doing your research, you meet a lot of people. And then when you graduate from this class, you're able to go back to those people and solve problems that exist in our area or work to achieve goals that may be desirable for the area, identify goals and so on. And I don't know if Mayor Stilton's been in the leadership class.
I have not, I have spoken with the mayor on the mayor's panel, but I've not attended the full class.
Yeah, but that's, I was, I used to nominate folks, but they've got so many classes now that I guess I've graduated from the committee that was on the nominations, but, you know, for example, Becky Devaney and all the councilmen, Teresa and Charlie Bailey, Jeff and Terry, you all would be eligible. Now, you may not be able to because of your employment, I understand that, because it does take a little time, but it's a great tool and they've moved it into the high school. And the times that I have taken the junior high students to Nashville to be pages, many times they will have a leadership from Hickman County or Dixon County that's touring the Capitol. So you may even go to Nashville as part of this and spend the day. It's really a great learning process and a great tool, but it does take quite a bit of time.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Joe. George?
Other than that, I know we were going to discuss financials tonight, but I went to print those, I just, I don't like the word "sad" right now. When I went going back to it, I went down March of '25, so I'm missing a month. So give me another day with that. I'll get with Ms. Teresa next week, I know she's got some things going on the week after. And I'll have everything ready probably by the first next week. For those who will be here to next council meeting, we'll go over it then. But if you could, I'd set a time up with you to meet next week. That's all I have at the moment.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bass?
Well, I've had several people ask, are there any ways that we can get the state to hold, that's one of the things. Bass is going to come out of Old Creek to live for a master degree? Then you get the county spot and you get down to her spot and it looks good.
Yeah. I'll tell you what I'll do, I'll reach out tomorrow to the guy who's over Anderson County and I'll ask.
Yeah, I've had people asking us out. Oh, that is like, seems like, like, so the Bailey's going good. I had no other complaints.
Sure. All right, thank you, Mr. Bass.
That was between Old Creek and Oliver Springs on 4 Lane.
Yes. Ms. Bailey?
Thank you, Mr. Tom.
Ms. Van Hook?
We got the proposals that were in our packet from Rogers Group and they included Airport Road on there. And the bid price for Airport Road was $120,410 to pay from the city limits all the way to Midway Drive. And given what we spent, which was over $11,000, just to fix that street at Oliver Drive in Norwood, just to fix that intersection was over $11,000. And I'm thinking from the city limits all the way to Midway Drive for $120,000, that's a bargain.
It is.
That is a bargain.
Yeah.
And I think that we should, we would really be kind of foolish to let the opportunity pass to take advantage of this bid. Now, I realize they're in the area and they're doing some paving and so, you know, they've already got the equipment on, you know, in the area. It's just something we need to, I think we need to consider whether that's not a wise thing for us to do, because I think we probably have enough money in State Street A.
Correct.
To be able to do that this year. And if there's anything that we need to do, it's to have capital projects, things that we can point to and say, I mean, every single year, we need to have something we can point to and say, "We did that this year."
Right.
And so...
So with that said, let me go ahead and grab two more bids, that way we kind of meet our policy.
Right.
And then add that for the next meeting, because I mean, I've talked about that bid with a few of you and, I mean, obviously, that's a very good bid. And again, like Ms. Teresa said earlier, in the area, I mean, that's an opportunity to take advantage of. So let's absolutely look at that a little closer.
How, you know, you said this bid was probably good for 30 days?
Usually they are, I don't know if it says on there or not.
I didn't know it was closely.
But that would put us through the next, that would put us through the next meeting. Yeah, offer expires 30 days.
Problem is, I won't be here the next meeting, but I sincerely think that we would be remiss, I mean, we would be irresponsible not to take advantage of a deal like that. And I mean, I'm just going on record as being in favor of this proposal here to pave Airport Road.
So one thing we could do to kind of get ahead of that too is go through and start replacing the utilities, so any like service line, water service line going underneath the road, pull a new service line, start of Midway or start of Airport Road right there, got a two-inch diameterized line right in the middle of the road, that's the one that's leaking, so you go past church over a little pump right there. So that'd be an opportunity to replace a lot of a water line as well. And it's up to, we can go ahead and just do that.
Well, I think you do need to go ahead and get the other bids, just because it is our policy to have more than one bid, but I don't think anybody's probably going to beat that. I mean...
Right. Probably not. Can you bleep that, Dudley? Well, that's to get out the foot of the bids.
Yes.
Like, that wouldn't interfere with the bid process.
It's close.
It's a beep or something.
But they're gone on, they're not...
Yeah, right, they're for the other one.
They're for Wayrock.
Yeah.
Anything else, Ms. Van Hook?
I don't think there is anything, I'll just beg. Oh, yeah, one more thing. I was talking with Cory today and alluding a little further to what I just said, that every year we need to have some kind of capital project that we can look at and say, "We accomplished this this year," which I know that, I know that you're very sensitive about that and want that to happen. You will see, you know, town can't grow if we're standing still, Cory. And to that point, our fire department is in desperate need of attention and we need to, our police department could use other facilities as well that were more modern. And I think we need to be thinking futuristically. I don't think we need to be stuck in a, you know, in a bubble somewhere. Like, you know, the gentleman pointed out to us at the water board meeting, you know, he said, "Look, we were stuck in the 80s or something with our computer technology." Well, we don't need to be stuck in the 80s or something with our thought process about how we're going to move this town forward with all of our facilities. We really need our facilities updated. And we need to, we need to get to moving on that.
I concur, and although I'm not a big fan of debt, sometimes debt is a necessary evil. Is it not, I mean? And so maybe we need to look at the, what it would be to take the long one out, update some structures and figure out what's best for the town as a whole. I mean, because, I mean, we're not going to win the lottery and all of a sudden get $10 million dollar reward.
Well, no, and, you know, we've talked about a justice center and, you know, I mean, all of us sitting here would love to have, you know, a combined justice center. Is that realistic for a small town? Probably not, not for a town the size of Oliver Springs, but what can we do? We can take what we've already got at the Fire Hall, we can improve much upon that. We've asked our police department to be in the location where they are for many, many years. I would love to see us, you know, we own the property out on the 4 Lane where the Boys Club is. Now, we're still waiting on a report to come back to us from the codes enforcement people in Roan County as to their inspection of that property. But to my mind, a justice center is out of reach for the foreseeable future, but why don't we take what we do have? And if, you know, we may possibly be able to move our police department out to that space with, you know, especially if codes enforcement comes back and condemns that space. I mean, we need to think logically about what we do have and what you just said about debt is absolutely correct. Debt for debt's sake is a bad thing. But debt in order to secure the future and to give us better facilities and to fix our infrastructure is not a bad thing if it is managed correctly. And that's what I'm concerned about. I want to see us move beyond saying, "Well, we just don't have the money, so we can't do anything." Yes, we can do something. We have to be willing to think outside the box. And I'm bitch.
I agree, I 100% agree, and I'll follow up on that here in just a minute. Mr. Holland?
Mr. Bass, I brought it last meeting, but the high grass, I think that wildflowers died out because of the dry.
Chief, why on 1241, East Drive County, she did a stop work, isn't it, already got that area flattened out? Is it the same place I'm thinking or?
No, so where the trailer was with Oning Field, the Tony Melhorne Motors, they started demo and they did not pull a demo permit from, I guess, Mr. Taylor's office is what it's called now, but they did not pull a permit, so where we have the contract in Roan County codes, they put a stop work order out there because they didn't have a plan in place for it.
Oh, okay, I didn't know there was one, but I guess that's good. It's kind of flat now, it was kind of, I was just worried about the flood or something. On the off season, I've had several people ask me where we can take brush, is there a place around here we can take brush somewhere?
No, not really, burning the city. We've got to deal with wind rock where we can take just strictly just brush out, I mean, it's hard individual, we couldn't do it.
I'll tell you what, I'm about to fly one over here. If they would call the city, I would, and I'd spend along.
Yeah.
As long as it's something within reason.
Yeah.
I'll take care of it. I'll just have my guys, one of them's...
Well, I mean, if it's something like you said, you know, we can't call up trees and stuff.
Right, I mean, if it's within...
Storm damage.
Right.
Obviously, if it's storm damage or something, we can, we can make rounds and pick stuff up.
That would like my boat, I got kind of a big yard, a lot of trees, can't really burn it, and they all kind of fall and it's, it's really hard to keep it neat looking. I've got a little chip for us after seeing Jason's accident, I'm kind of nervous. I do use a two before we're just to ride. Just have them call in, we'll take care of it, we want one or another, we'll take care of it. And on the minutes, you had asked about the first meeting in August.
We talked about it last night.
Did we say, "Yeah, your day or not?"
I don't think we made a decision.
So we'll keep it the same if you all want to. I'm just concerned about this meeting here, having meetings back to back weeks, but that was the only issue with August. It's going to be, it's going to be August the 7th, so, I mean, that would be fun.
Okay, I just, I would clear it up and see what's coming.
Right.
Anything else, Mr. Holland?
Is the block party and the back to school thing the same thing or is it, I thought that was eight.
It's the one.
Please don't tell nobody.
Come on, Saturday, white friend.
Now, y'all, we'll be open Saturday.
Two to seven, yes. Live entertainment, 5 until 7 at Devaney's.
Cool. Say I'll put it over for us, for sure.
Anything else, Mr. Holland?
May I get the mayor to table dance?
Oh, no, 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 listen, that's one thing a mayor don't do, dance.
I'm going to have a stage. No, not this time.
Okay. I will say, I drove by Red Bull Park and it's starting to look really good. That pavilion is top notch, Carmichael Park as well, the entrance looks really good. So, sort of going back to what you had said, I literally had this conversation today with my wife and we were talking about, you know, we're not fans of debt sometime, and like you said, debt for debt's sake is bad, but debt for a long-term purpose and goal is good. And here's what we were discussing, and I got thinking, your grandchildren, your children, my children, your grandchildren, I don't know your family dynamic, I don't want to lie, but, you know, and I think of, we have, mine are three, six and nine, right? And I want my kids to have it better than we have it here in our town, and I want to start thinking long, like you said, long-term goals and what can we do to make sure we're in the best position possible for our kids to have a beautiful town, a nice town, you know, facilities and structures that are safe and, you know, we can say, "Hey, that's our police department, hey, that's our fire department, that's our justice center," whatever. And so I welcome some strategic thought, process and planning and let's see what we can do over the next six months, right? And maybe we just set a meeting one night and we call it a strategy vision session or something, I don't know, bring your thoughts and ideas to the table, let's see what we can hammer out, iron out versus a council setting and we just have a vision casting session. I don't know, just thinking outside the box, but speaking of what really looks good is the town really looks good. And I shared with Rusty, a mayor, local mayor, was it last week, two weeks ago, last week? We don't have to, I can't remember.
Last week.
Two weeks ago.
Yeah.
We go forward.
Drove through and was like, it was Mayor Bass from Harriman, just called me up and said, "My goodness, Jason, you all have it going on down there." He's like, "It looks beautiful." And so just, you know, thank you guys. And I know I referenced them privately in a text message group and thanked them for what they do and other people have noted on Facebook here recently how well the town looks and it does, it looks incredible. So just want to say thank you for them. Chief Laxton, you're up. No, okay.
I want to bring for you guys a couple things tonight, just one thing that's of action and then the other two just be kind of a council general update. Erickson County General Government or County Commission approved $50,000 to be given to the fire department. That's for operational needs, is equipment, just similar to the likely one that we did last year, is for $20,000. I need approval to be able to accept that from Erickson County. It'll go into a designated fund that does roll over in case we don't spend out $50,000 within the fiscal year and we don't lose that money, just because the way it zeros out the balance at the end of the year.
So I'll make a motion to accept the budget from Anderson County.
How much was it?
$50,000.
From Anderson County Commission?
Yes.
Is it undesignated?
It's, it's undesignated just for the fire departments.
So motion by Mr. Bass, second by Ms. Van Hook. Any discussion, my counsel? Roll call, Joe.
Jeff Bass?
Yes.
Charlie Bailey?
Yes.
Teresa Van Hook?
Yes.
Terry Holland?
Yes.
Becky Devaney?
Yes.
Now, for the minutes, I suppose when you decide what you're spending on, you'll come back and ask.
I'll come back for the items that have to be funded out as large items, other things, just kind of, just give you guys kind of an update of what we're doing with it. The, you know, when I come for you guys with the PPE and shoes last time, I said that there would possibly be a next bunch for the technical rescue gear, that's one thing. We're going to finish that out with this funds, that'll be a portion of. The other thing that we're doing, I've been in contact, Jason's been talking to us and me and Chief Laxton have been talking as well. The town does have a known hazard of flooding and/or swift water conditions. The fire department does respond regional, and when I say regionally, I'm talking like countywide, as part of an asset for the entire county. We mainly work in conjunction with Erickson County because the majority of our hazard areas are in Erickson County. Part of the funding is funding, eventually will be eight of our members going to Swift Water Rescue School. That incorporates them getting equipped as well. It's roughly about $1,000 to equip each one of those rescuers. Eight gives us enough that allows us to essentially be a team, but we're part of a greater team. And what that means is that if we have an incident here in town, a swift water nature, you're also going to get Erickson County Rescue Squad, some of our little fire departments, some of Claston Fire Department, that's coming as one cohesive unit. There were supposed to be three of them, go to training this weekend. Unfortunately, we're in a little bit of a drought condition with the river, so they're going to end up postponing that training until October, which will allow a couple more go as well. But that's a portion of what that equipment is going to go for. Other than that, it's going to be small items that we need, that we've been needing for a while to replace fans, hose, equipment in general, just kind of give you guys an update on that.
Chief, does this need to be in the fiscal year or does it matter?
It does not matter. It does not matter. The next thing I got for you guys, we officially launched on the 15th, our Community Connect. I come for you guys back in January, you guys voted, approved for us to purchase Community Connect through our reporting system. What that is, is the citizens and businesses within town have the ability to give us information completely secured, us information about their businesses, their homes, things like that. In addition, one thing that we've been trying to get on board for the last few years has been an online ability to request smoke detectors and permits. Right now... Um, right now, if you call the 435 number, it does ring the fire party, it comes directly to me. Uh, I don't have 24/7 access, but a lot of times people call. That is a direct access, you can access it 24/7, um, and request burn permits, smoke detectors, uh, there'll be other things that we'll add in online. So, what I got for each one of you guys, if you'll pass that round, Jeff, is the QR code that goes directly to that. It also gives you some information about it. Um, you know, everybody can access it as far as individuals, okay? Now, your information's completely secure. The only people that can access your information is the fire department themselves, and the only time they can access that information, if there's an app, decides like the administrative side, is if there is a call to your address. If there's a call to your address, it pops up on their phone where they can actually access information. And some of that group of information might be, um, say, if you have a household with a, um, somebody that's under medical care or has a handicap, it lets us know upfront. That way, we're not guessing on if there's a victim, we're not a victim. Um, the burn permit part is something that we're trying to as well, so even if you call, because we'll still have the phone access, even if you call the fire department, I'm asking for your email address while you're doing it, because when you get a burn permit, I'm issuing you a burn permit, and you're actually getting a physical email copy of your burn permit as well. So, that's something additional that we're doing. Uh, that's something you guys approved, uh, like I said, it's gonna be a great resource. The fire department even, like say if we have an emergency or we just want to get out some critical information, the individuals can sign up for alerts, we can send out a mass alert, uh, just simple like through our red alert program as well, but it's another way for us to contact individuals and businesses in there. So, that's what that is. Uh, the last item I got is fire station updates, remodel, handle what's under. Um, mayor come by to, uh, deliver some items that we're gonna be handing out over this weekend, and we sent him on a tour of the station. And one of the things that we noticed, we've been battling with it for about a year now, is down in the old courtroom, which is now our training room, uh, we're dealing with a little bit of a mold issue. Um, we went by, we took out some sheet rock, uh, some additional items, but we do have, this is just a mainly update, that we're battling a mold issue in there. Hopefully, we've got it taken care of. Um, the goal is, or not the goal, the plan is, is as we repair, there's a little bit of a leak from upstairs in the old bathroom, that's from, I mean, station's built in 95, so, you know, things are going weak over time, but we're also gonna put a dehumidifier downstairs as well, because that building just sweats. Um, so hopefully, that'll take care of that issue, kind of get some longevity out of it. So, that's what I got for you guys tonight, and, um, Ms. Van Hook, I forgot about you, I'm working on it, so.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Chief, when you have any, uh, burning permits getting awful dry, you got anything to tell everybody?
So, uh, right now, uh, we're completely issuing burn permits, um, it's still green. Uh, I follow, so I typically, like if somebody calls for a burn permit and it's 8:00 AM, I won't issue it yet. I'm waiting till about 9:00 AM, because I'm waiting for the State of Tennessee to post their, uh, online portion, and usually that don't really start kicking off till about August. Um, that's when we really worry about some fire danger. Uh, it is a little dry, but it's not critical. Uh, the wind ain't up enough that I'm really truly worried. Usually, anything above 10 to 15 miles per hour in the wind, that's when I really get kind of a little uneasy with it. But what I typically do is every morning, I'll check with the state, it's, I say the State of Tennessee, but it's the fire weather data, and I look for the fire danger rating, and that's in conjunction with the Tennessee Department of Forestry. Putting those two pieces of information together is whether I'd say, "Hey, no burns today," or "We might burn today." The other thing about that, the Community Connect portion, say if I do issue a burn ban, you cannot get a burn permit through that. It won't let you actually get one, because I'll actually put a stop on it. And then if I do put a stop on it, it'll actually notify you that the burn permit's no longer valid, uh, through the system. And we also contact people, so right now, I'm telling people, just use caution, um, follow the rules and guidelines that we've put in place that are available online, and, you know, make sure you call and please give our permit before you start, before you start burning. Um, because a lot of people will call, they will not leave a message. Uh, if I miss the call, I, I don't know if they might call back, and I don't know what the purpose of their call is. So, then I'll, they'll call and leave a message, and I might get back to them, you know, 30 minutes later. I've already took care of it. Uh, you've gotta have the burn permit before you start burning. You have to have that burn permit, so that's something I tell everybody, try to plan accordingly.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
All right. All business. Just got some possible approvals taken Windrock Road from bridge to city limit sign, the three quotes, and, uh, before Cory jumps into this, obviously, you all have the quotes. Um, the third quote that came in substantially lower, uh, you all see the price, which was $33,000, some odd dollars.
$678.
And so, me and Cory thought it might be too good to be true, sends us inch and a half, so, versus two inches, which were the other quotes, so in doing due diligence, I reached out to a good friend of mine. Uh, he, I grew up with him, he now lives in Indiana, but he's been doing asphalt, uh, work literally for 20-plus years, and he has a, a lot of knowledge with Rogers Group Asphalt, and he said, "Ask them if they still put steel slag in their top coat." I'm like, "What?" So, we did. I, I called Rusty, I said, "Rusty, call them and ask," and they confirm that they do. Basically, what that does is the steel slag is super strong, so they can get away with inch and a half, and it greatly reduces the cost. And so, I tried to make sure I did our due diligence to make sure that, hey, if we go with a substantially lower bid, that it's not inferior, it's not an inferior product, because then, then you're going backwards, right? Uh, so, now that's not, it's the will of the council, you all can go with the bid that you want, but you just know that that's not, you know, they'll say is, if it looks too good to be true, it probably is. Well, that's what I thought, until we researched it and tried to be thorough in getting all the information that we needed to make the correct decision for the town, because at that bid, then that means we can do other things on other roads. Correct? So, I'll shut up. Cory?
I don't know if some said asphalt, and some said E-mix, I don't know if there's a difference in that.
I mean, it's basically the same thing.
Yeah.
Uh, but there's one that's just more specific about type of asphalt.
It's commercial E-mix.
Yeah.
And then this one just says E-mix.
Make commercial, we accept Rogers Group's bid for $33,000. $678 for retained for revenue.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion?
What? And Ms. Van Hook was talking about, if we get, if Anderson County hasn't paid the bottom of Windrock, if we can get a better, kind of like the airport road, right? Hey, I can reach out and ask, no harm in asking, so I could do that.
Anderson County's been doing some paving.
They have been doing a lot of paving.
Yeah, they really have, and it looks good.
It looks really good. Yeah, that's sacred, the price there in that area, once you get started, it's a lot cheaper than.
I will, I'll reach out to Mayor Frank, and I'll reach out to Gary Wall, I'll find out. So, any, Joey? Any further discussion? Roll call, Joe?
Jeff Bailey?
Yes.
Charlie Bailey?
Yes.
Chris Savannah?
Yes.
Terry Holland?
Yes.
Ricky Blaney?
Yes.
That's been paved up, State Street, 802.
Yes, that's correct. Uh, Rusty, real quick, I know, in business, do you want to discuss that little list that you made and set up here real quick, or do you not want to discuss it? Do you want to discuss it?
I can.
Come on up here real quick. Well, uh, I'm not trying to waste your all's time, I just, this is, we, um, just real quick, you know, you ain't got, well, you don't have a list, but you got the list, so. And, and I know if, if, I know how I would rate one through five, what would, what in your words is number one item?
Number one item would probably be a four-door F-250 for the inmates.
Yeah.
The van tore up three weeks ago. We put about $6,400 in the past four years, and it's just not worth putting more money into it. So, I was on vacation, I had them go get my truck and get the stuff in for the inmates. Today, it overheated, and it's a possibility that the heads are cracked.
In your personal truck?
No, my work truck.
Now, now he's using his personal truck, or his work truck right now.
Yes. And then, after that, bucket truck, that was our bucket truck, insurance company has set for the past four years to get it inspected, and when they inspect it, they're gonna, it's like, then we'll be out of the bucket truck. After that, the grapple truck, Terry was asking about the limbs earlier, we had the grapple truck. City of Clinton goes around once a week and picks up brush instead of the haul and spring. Then the salt truck, fortunately enough, the mayor bought one, so this year, during the snow we got in January, he helped us, helped us out a lot with two of them, depending on the snows we get. And then just the two hackathon trucks, it's just the normal everyday drivers, because right now, we have the Explorer, which is not feasible for, doesn't work with them. As me and Jason talked earlier, and Cory, we've talked, all these trucks are nickel and dime a month a day. We're spending so much money on getting fixed every month, we just need to upgrade everything.
Cory, what do we have in the budget? Budget-wise, that to work with, number-wise?
Um, I don't know if we put a vehicle in, for some reason, I thought we did, uh, under capital. Let me, let me get back to you on that one.
While you're standing in front of us, how is the new shed working out over there? Is that working good for you?
Yeah, it's keeping mainly all the Christmas stuff here, the water department's got the Hoover off doors, so they're keeping all their stuff here. The silver department has moved their stuff to Silver Point, so we took all of our road signs and all street signs, but work zone signs, that way everybody has access to them. So, it's working out good.
Any electricity took on?
Yes, it did.
Could you, could you maybe give us a quote to what, you know, to run it over and, and figure out, just so we can, if we don't know, we don't know.
Yeah.
Right? So, if you could, that'd be great.
Of course.
All right. Thank you. That's all. All right. Motion to adjourn.
On both sides?